Greg Brooks.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Andrew Field.
Here.
Dewey Esquima.
Here.
John Pipinger.
Here.
Samantha Trantham.
Here.
James Woody.
Here.
First is approval amendments, please make.
Motion to approve and unapproved next.
Say.
Got motion by John, second by Jeremy, any discussion?
Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esquima.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Next is approval approval of reports of losses.
Motion to approve.
Say.
Got motion by John, second by Samantha, any discussion?
Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esquima.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Next is approval notaries, we got one tonight. Candy, Candy Hatcher, been in Tennessee, she worked for the same company. We have it all on the head.
Make them up.
Say.
Got a motion by James, second by you, any discussion on the notaries?
Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esquima.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Next is budget amendments, and what I'm gonna do is, of course, closer it gets to the end of budget, the more budget amendments we got, and we've literally got seventy-two or seventy-three now. And we can, instead of reading them all and boring everybody and taking them thirty minutes, anybody from the paper or in the audience that'd like a copy of them, we'll supply you the copy, and we'll just move forward, if I can get a motion to approve the budget amendments, and anybody in the audience or public or newspapers or...
I'd like a copy.
Do you want some?
I want a copy.
Okay.
Motion to approve as approved. You check on that purpose?
Yeah.
I'll say it.
Got a motion by John, second by Dave, any discussion?
Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esquima.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Now we have one separate, it's for, we got, this is for the blocks of the jail. Was it, was it in those, we just done?
They just came.
Okay, we just got it, so it's budget amendment number...
So what's that number? That's number one, three.
Yeah, we might have to, is the jail for me, well, number eleven on the agenda is jail for me.
It was a number seven, five.
Well, we probably just need to put them in, actually, we go on number eleven, let the jail committee make their... We'll save it.
You said number seven, four.
It'd be number seven, five.
And what did you get it, you wanna get the number eleven off the agenda? Property accessory, third possibility. How many pages here? Just put that on next one.
It was just... We got it on that list, you know. That's that good, it's taken it down.
It was the surplus stuff, our offices did last meeting, but they didn't get it from last meeting.
How much longer can we dispose of this surplus property?
The setup, you handed out last, the budget made, last mission made.
Yes. Yes, please.
That was, I'm pretty confident.
Yes.
We got a motion by James, somebody second by you, say, by you, any more discussion on surplus property?
Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esquima.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Next is a later grant resolution. Later resolution. Resolution number five, one nineteen, it's the resolution authorizing the public county executive to execute contracts between the state of Tennessee and part of transportation in public county. Whereas pursuant to section forty-one dash two dash one twenty-three, Tennessee code, the commission of transportation authorized to make grants to counties for purposes of funding programs for collection of litter and trash along county and state interstate roads and highways. Whereas public county has submitted an application to department for grants received that outline the plan of collection of litter and trash. Whereas public county agrees to emphasize education for litter control and prevention and agrees to allocate twenty percent of the contract amount for education and will raise the department. And the parties will enter into a contract providing terms and conditions to govern expenditure of the grant funds in amount of four-four thousand two hundred dollars. Now, therefore, it was all by public county board commission, that public county executive be authorized to sign the contract between the state of Tennessee and part of transportation in public county. This is twenty-third day of May, twenty-nineteen.
Say.
Got a motion by James, second by Dave, any discussion?
Number five, one nineteen, is that right?
More discussion?
Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esquima.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Next is from previous meeting, bill of grounds for me to meet. We'll tell you what next month. Fence bid for road department, we'll tell you what next month, we make, Mr. Thompson, we agree that, what's the budget time, budget space, say what our money situation is.
Signs, who's gonna take the place of that?
What else we got in road department? I check them off, they're all wanted, we need, if this will go, keep it out. Right here on this first item here, we'd mention to you about the leasing of the trucks, and that couldn't be done, the state coming at them because of the auto finding, that was, had come up with, I think, the school system, that had been fixed. The local government has, has presented that it would be better to borrow money from the local pool to, not essentially lease, it could be better just to actually purchase it outright and then make payments to the local pool. And it would be a cheaper way of doing it, and it would be in the local government level with the state, and to do that, it would, we'd have to have an open forum meeting to inform the public and let the public have, you know, input on doing that, what would be the public's wishes about it. It would essentially be the purchase of four tractor motors and three dump trucks. And that's what the first item is.
Question on the first item.
Yes.
I understand what I'm doing, that's one, so that's why. Would you have to vote on the actual action and open commission?
Resolution.
I request you give me a bit of a resolution.
Open forum, yes, open forum gets the input from the public on when the actual purchase through the local public. And that would therefore send in forwarded requests at that point, as they're approved by the open forum, to request for the resolution approval of the funds. And that's where it starts from, that's the basis of it, and that'd be the only thing is just to get a date from the commission, I'll be all advertising, just search for it. Basically, the commission is to be present during the open forum, and the best dates that I have for that is June fourth or January sixth, if that's possible. And just request the first date for the open forum at Charles' meeting.
Where would you vote for it?
In Corvax. Or wherever it's at. It's not committed to anything, it's just that you, you'll have open forum meeting.
Three days.
And I've got all the information for it, like I said, it's been a lot of work, trying to try to prepare the auto finding, so it just takes place.
The auto finding wasn't on your department?
It wasn't on my department, no sir, but it was probably the whole county kind of had a disavowed position. Did you say we had to do that here at the court, have?
Yes.
Well, we can't does copper eagle?
You can follow the form, that's left over here.
We can add thirty minutes for the budget, make, it's summer, everybody's gonna wake up, it's hard enough to get everybody one meeting, like budget meeting, so, if that's how everybody will do it in thirty minutes for the budget meeting. That would be, I think that's even on my own note here, that we'd have it prior to the budget meeting.
That was on the eleven, so.
Yes. Oh, is it? We hate to have it blank.
We have to have it five, seven days, or five, seven days before the county commission meeting, so that when we get that resolution, it's before, and then that way we got it, and then that way when we bring it against on the twenty-third, the commission meeting, we have to make some progress.
That may not time, we don't know, eleven, that'd be twelve days. Five days prior to the commission meeting. That's twelve days.
Yeah, that's, but is it, is it restricted date for, is it, does it say set a five to seven days, or does it allow us to...
Well, that's eleven days between the veteran meetings, you, I mean, the future meetings, I know it's...
Well, I'm saying, sometimes we agree to vote for it. We can have it before that five to seven.
Right, that's why we said four to six.
So it's just a deadline.
Well, we was wanting it four to six, 'cause you always got training, you got to...
Well, you're thinking it's six thirty, right? I didn't mean to say it. I'd say it was six thirty for it. So what you have, Greg? I'll be in Knoxville, I've got a C I training up there too. You would like a six thirty? I wish I don't label the six thirty. It probably would be over here about one o'clock, so I probably won't be back till... I've got a ground date, so I'll, I'll actually make sure. We're trying to change, don't wanna change, but as of now, we're up to meeting. Six thirty on the left, before we make the budget meeting.
She said eleven.
What about, what about the Tuesday before that?
That's when everybody gets a meeting, before we try to have a budget meeting, before that, so, this is a problem, do you want everybody to be at the budget meeting?
Yeah.
And then, if they can't like, they can't let us know, that day, we'll just show up, we'll have another, like that Thursday or something. This is, this is important, man, I thought, this is real, this is real important. The other three items is, is meeting and approval, and we discussed them in the committee meetings. And we have to deal with the waiting for resolution, and the other is speeding with the reduction near church zones on selected roads and the commission approval for the reduction of speed on Moss Road, which we talked about with them in the committee meetings.
So we don't need to do nothing on number one then?
Not to the link, yes, just wanted to make sure it's updated, appreciate you, Chris.
I made a motion that we approved, number two, number three, and number four, this is already been went through the local committee, and we approved it there, and we've got recommended, the full commission that we approved this. Put the surplus notes on the board for your section.
We got a motion by James, second by you, any discussion?
You got something down? I got a couple, I'm a little busy, you've got the resolution saying twenty minutes and restrict through trucks, certain on the road, all county roads, four, is that four service?
Yeah.
Proffty.
Yeah. What's wrong?
What, what roads you talking about, four service?
I gave you a resolution the last three, four weeks we were at. It may any, more than John O, what this does, when they sell their timber, it just keeps them from, four service timber trucks, tires, fire open, you know, it could be any of them.
Well, that's gonna hold them while, or what, how?
Yeah.
You think about the road community?
Well, it could be any of them.
Commission.
We've been to three committees and three commission meetings with the same information.
Okay, I do have a couple of bids, but the forest service parts, what, you got my pitch?
The main, the main reason for it, more services, that they're, they end up logging out the forest service property, and they'll take, you know, trailers, and get on the county roads, they mess them up, and then we won't be notified until the damage has already been done, and trying to give the reimbursement for that is near impossible. But this has no effect on people to live on the road? No, not, no. Any effect on the citizen that has a destination to live on that road, they use that road, they may even have a truck that they own, and that truck, it don't affect them. Forest service and toning tree, they made a alternate route to go around the waiting, waiting on the bridge, he's already less than what they can home across, so they just went around it, through their property, build a road over the shake of a church road, and so they're ultimately, they're gonna haul right out onto a good county acreage, which is grassy creek. Last estimation, they're going to lock out about twelve hundred, fifteen hundred acres out in that area, and that's gonna be really a strain on the county road. So this will, this will serve as a way of contact with them, or at least a permit, and get it defined as what maintenance they will do if they damage, that's what this is for. Just to give the county a little more ability to collect for damages that are due to our county roads. Any more discussion?
Here's one, we're looking for, we should know, Moss Road, what's your speed you're working on?
Fifteen, I think, would be...
It's already got an existing speed on there, that's not gonna change much going up to Granny Moss, but from Granny Moss on back to the wedding venue, it's gonna have to drop because the road gets down to like a lane, lane and a quarter, it's not even a good lane and a half, and you can't really get away from each other if you do move, and people that are going to the wedding venue are not accustomed to that road, so when they leave, they just...
They fly.
Fly, that's good.
Yeah, but anyway, that's the reason.
It's got a high traffic with that wedding venue out there, you've got the locals, they don't have a problem driving back and forth.
It was basically a farm road, I've been on it years and years and years, we farmed it back in there, and it was a farm road with pavement smeared on.
Yeah.
Yeah, and now they're treating it like, this venue like it's highway sixty-four.
Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esquima.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Seven yes.
And on our own, so, we're going on budget amendment from road department.
Give me standard.
A budget amendment, number nineteen dash five, proposed force fund is two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, undesignated fund balance, proposed expenditure fund is one thousand, truck drivers, four thousand, social security, hundred-and-fifty thousand for asphalt, one thousand for tolling and services, thirty thousand for diesel fuel, ten thousand for gas, hundred-and-fifty thousand for motor vehicles, total two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars of expenditure.
I like the motion to approve this.
Motion by James, second by you, any more discussion?
Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esquima.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Seven yes.
I believe I've touched here, I'll throw the department bids from that, is that right, Paul G?
Yes.
That is tonight.
That's it, the motion is pretty much.
Moving on, next is ambulance contract candidacy.
You have that resolution, you have to put in the budget, I just need that approved, so I can sign up the contract, getting it here with AMR, they're just waiting to have that pulled, we could look forward to it.
Resolution number one, approve the second amendment to ambulance service contract between public county Tennessee and rural metro of Tennessee, and authorize the county executive to execute the second amendment to ambulance service contract between public county Tennessee and rural metro of Tennessee, on behalf of public county Tennessee. Whereas public county Tennessee and rural metro of Tennessee entered into an ambulance service contract for emergency, non-emergency, medical transportation and related services on July third, twenty-ten. Whereas the term of the agreement is pleased extended, and the first amendment to the ambulance service contract between public county Tennessee and rural metro of Tennessee. Whereas public county Tennessee and rural metro of Tennessee desire to amend the agreement for a second time. Whereas the second amendment to the agreement shall amend the agreement as follows, number one, extend the term of the agreement for additional years to July third, twenty-nineteen, through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. Number two, provide for two additional one-year extensions beyond June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. Number three, rural metro agrees to restrict movement of the public county, dedicated offices for coverage to Mackman County, those towns of Mackman County is a level zero. Whereas, all other terms and conditions of the agreement shall remain the same. Now, therefore, be resolved, legislated body of sessions assembled that, second amendment to ambulance service contract between public county Tennessee and rural metro of Tennessee is approved, and number two, the county executive is authorized to execute the second amendment to ambulance service contract between public county Tennessee and rural metro of Tennessee, on behalf of public county Tennessee. Big murder is on, this resolution take effect from the act of passage, public welfare requirement.
Motion to approve, five, two, and that.
Say.
Got a motion by John, second by Samantha, any more discussion on ambulance contract?
Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esquima.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Next is Mr. Davis, it's a grant rights proposal.
Okay, I'm, I've got Mr. Harold here tonight, so we're gonna try to keep, I know this is a long meeting, so we're gonna try to keep everything short and sweet. What this is, what I'm proposing to the committee is that Mr. Harold, that we do some kind of contractual agreement, that we would have to get our county attorney to draw up. He will be searching and working for us for absolutely nothing, if he doesn't find anything, if he doesn't acquire us any grants, he gets absolutely nothing. Anything that he finds, he will first go to the county mayor with it, give his opinion, give his approval, to see if he feels like it needs to go forward. If it does, then he will come back to us as a commission to see what we think about it, he will go forward with nothing on his own, till we have been fully advised and talked about, before it makes any step in any direction. But we have no commitment to him whatsoever, if he does not get us anything, if the grant's not approved, and like I told him, there's grants out there that we can't even afford, because we can't afford to do any matching. So he understands all that, and, you know, but, he's willing to look and try and work for us for nothing, basically, unless he gets something. If he does, then, you know, it's, it's in his kind of paperwork, guy, the way it, it's comes and goes, to be truthful, I don't forgot what it does, I'll say, I read it, but now I don't forgot it. And, but anyway, but in order for him to go forward, he has to have a contractual agreement with us, and so we have to approve it. He has a lot of friends, he's good friends with Governor Lee, he has a lot of friends in a lot of places, and, you know, he's just, just willing to try to help us in any way that he can see fit. So, anyway, what I'd like to do, if any of y'all got any questions, please feel free to ask him, and if he can give us any kind of a statement, and then if the chairman would approve us taking a vote on it, then we'll go forward.
Be a vote to have the county attorney do?
To, yeah, to draw up a, a contract with him, I guess would be the next procedure.
My only question is, you know, we don't pay unless you are successful now.
If it's a grant that comes along, and you apply for it, and get it, we approve.
You've got to, I will work first, I will work first with the county mayor, start there, he will look at, there are so many grants that you don't qualify for, okay, that you won't qualify for. You could spend, you could spend a month going through, paying somebody to go through and look at grants, and find two that you would qualify for. Then you're gonna take, then you're gonna turn around and you're going to then apply for them, and one thing I will tell you, and this is not being egotistical, I'm not elected, so I don't have to worry about, I don't have to worry about being reelected, and I'm gonna do what's best and apply, and bring stuff to your county mayor that absolutely will be for everybody. There's, there's, like the broadband, the broadband... There's, there's, like the broadband, the broadband that, I, I talked, I talked to economic development people today about broadband. I'm upset whether I get this job with y'all or not, I am really upset that Polk County got no funding for broadband. And they have went around and around and around and tried to explain to me what a utility is, and, um, they said, well, you know, a utility has to have power lines, I said, no, utility, gas lines, Polk County has to guys utility, they have utilities, they can run an operation out of there, they can apply as a utility. Y'all gonna have to revisit that because you have, you have taken this program and you have hurt counties like Polk County. I don't have anything against McMinn County, but for McMinn County to get any money and Polk County get none, there's something wrong with that, there's just really something wrong with that, because the need, you've got a great opportunity, and this is one of the things I'll be looking for, you've got a great opportunity, in my opinion, with the, with, down in Georgia, the new port down there that the railroad has set up, across the line in Tennessee, these companies that are delivering those, delivering those containers back and forth, picking them up and delivering them, financially, it's a lot better for them to be in Polk County and pay taxes and pay taxes on their truck and license their vehicles and stuff in Tennessee than to do it in Georgia. You gotta have broadband, though, you're gonna have to have broadband to get them. And money on those things like that, those are things that I get excited about and I definitely will be an advocate for you. And like I said, it's not caution anything, it does if, if I, if you're awarded the grant. Are you familiar with the word loquacious? Means overly talkative, so, yeah, in a meeting like this, that's the reason, Deb, Deb knows I'm loquacious, so.
We didn't need a motion, I can proceed forward with it, and you talked to county executive, county attorney.
Let me say one thing about right now, a lot of grants, see, one of the things that you, that your county mayor knows, a lot of them are closed. When I started looking at grants, they were, there wasn't enough time, there wasn't enough time to apply for them. You couldn't even get the information together to get in. And if not me, you do need somebody, and, anyway. That'd be great.
No obligation right now until we have something in our...
That'd be great, let me give him, I don't know that you...
Here's the, this is information that everybody got a...
Anybody else got any questions?
We'll get this approved, I'm sure we'll have it served for next month. If it's passing tonight.
All right.
I second it.
Got a motion by John, second by Debbie, any more discussion? Roe County.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Doobie Escamont?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
James Witty?
No.
Six yes, one no.
Uh, next is Hospital of Lake County, Dave.
Hospital of Lake, uh, I know that's been a topic, not so. I've talked to the, uh, three doctors, or the two doctors in North Georgia Physical on their lease. Everybody wanted to know about the lease, the lease, about the lease. North Georgia Physical, as I talked to them today, they all wanna go month to month. They do not want a one-year lease. They wanna keep the fourteen hundred on them, and will not sign anything longer than a month to month. Uh, they're legally signing without the doctor being there, that was from Ms. Darnell. So I contacted or tried to contact Dr. Hewitt, I did not get in contact with Dr. Hewitt, nor MJ, but the lady at North Georgia Physical said that they had things that they wanted changed in their lease before they would want to look and sign anything. I know that's secondhand information, but that's what I found out. Doctor Sediki, he sent an email, he wants a five-year lease agreement, does not want a year-to-year, and would not sign anything any less than a five-year agreement. So, that's where the information is as far as the doctors and where they stand at on their lease.
So, we have a bill in committee meeting?
They're gonna wanna take it and forward to committee meeting and decide what we're gonna do, what you all want, want me to do or push forward and do, but as of right now, there are no lease agreements signed with those positions.
Can anybody on the bill committee come next year, about seven o'clock? I need to take care of this one, I think we're on...
Or like next season, so, you're saying? You asked to, things, but you can play your... Next thing on there, uh, I'm sorry, like I said, I know it says no information, in fact, but I don't have a contract to present to you, that's one of the things. The next thing is, is last Friday, our county attorney brought the quick lane deed for the hospital, and filed that. So, we do possess the quick lane deed for the Calabasas Medical Center. So, that is in our possession, that is bound. Let's take care of the reverb or revert clause, that should take care of any questions that are there. Eric was giving the package information as far as how it gets passed down, so we will have that on file as well. I have been approached by a purchaser. I asked this purchaser to come through to the committee, I know some of y'all asked questions with one percent of earnest money. I've also asked for a list of the investors and the lenders, what they require. I also let them know that anything that comes forth from now would be subject to this commission as well as the Duck County Commission's proof, and the proof of funds. If this person is serious, I wanna be sure that they're serious before the county wastes any time. If they're not, I have been in contact with the new CEO of T-Over. If not, we have this revert clause cleaned up, as if you remember the one, the first county commission meeting yet, you all give myself and the attorney area group to split bids to do something. Right now, we still want to see some type of medical facility there. The time's ticking in far as the COA and those things that are there. I talked to different ones, we're trying our hardest to see, but we do have revert clause. That should all be cleared up now that we...
Next is, uh, also county sanitation contract.
Sanitation contract, once again, as you see, no information in your package, that's the cause of the contract, or the bids were not opened until Friday, uh, on the twentieth. And, uh, whenever they came out, when we had the budget meeting the other day, pretending to you all how that they would read, the numbers that I give you are estimates off of the hauls, the tonnage, uh, the operation cost for Benton, the haul rate for Benton, I'm sure you all looked at those, I've got the numbers, anybody who need them to come see me, I'll give them to you. The haul rate Benton yearly, it's gonna cost three hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. That's if the hauls are right, if the tonnage is right, it didn't turn it. South Polk, it's gonna cost fifty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents in estimate. Linnisdale, thirty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars, thirty-two cents. Reliance, thirty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. The estimated west Polk side cost is gonna be five, or four hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and seven cents. East side of the county, Grassy Creek's total cost, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and fifty-six cents. The varner cost, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, four four two twenty-four. That is on a six-month...
Contract.
Contract with both of the providers that we have now. We can, now more than, as Georgian State Director, since we got that all exciting cleaned up, that was not in our side, that was on the school's side. But we have gotten that cleaned up since, but also they have already done the same thing again, but now we're worried. So we're gonna work to keep that cleaned up, so hopefully we won't have this problem again. I talked to USDA as far as the law to move forward and to look into, I've talked to Southeast Development District, I've talked into T-Deck, Mark and I have been meeting, James was in a meeting the other day to meet T-Deck's. But I would like to look into and have an RFP after we get an RFI, Beth Jones at Southeast will help us with that, and let's see what it's gonna cost to move forward and purchase the compactor for the county on mill. If you look at that package, the haul rate, or the hauls, in just hauls on Benton, it's costing two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars a year. That's just for somebody hauling a party. If we get, if we go forward with this, you can look to cut those haul rates back. If we was to purchase at least one, if not two trucks, look to do these things, look, right now, this six-month contract that county, that Max's Hose was offered is on the table. This would buy some time, look forward into, into purchasing our own, look forward.
Pretty much all the chores.
For that is our only choice. And it says, we've stayed the other night in the budget committee, we could finance it, and then we'll look to, we'll start to prepare this, because with, with no CPI being involved in it over the years, we kicked the can, or the can's been kicked, and it's been kicked, and that's its defense. And we've gotta look to fix this and try to go resolve. A lot of the issue we have, Richie and them are here tonight, but they, they're pulling out a partner, their partner's a longer route as well as the open talks. When you haul six open talks on a Saturday, out of bid, at two hundred and nineteen dollars each time? Exactly that. So, my proposal, my whole, the disposition is, is move forward, let's enter into this six-month contract, and, uh, and work, and we try to come back with a long-range plan, and that can be to move forward and to purchase our own equipment. And to see if we got, letting a whole lot of these costs, it's still a little bit operate. I know the tonnage rate will go up, but we can start cutting out some of these hauls and price per pool, and also to put some teeth, as some of you just heard earlier, I don't wanna call anybody out, but you work with some of the people that run these sites, you know, they've been touched that, they've been stood upon, they've had all these things done. And all we're trying to do is maintain mechanics dump sites. What my proposal to you all is, is entering this six-month agreement, and let's look into operating one of them.
There's two options, SanTech's, is there not?
No. Oh, yes, 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 I'm worried, yes. SanTech did theirs then, if you wanted to go separate, where you wouldn't have to. Let the tons be what the tons be, and that is thirty-seven thousand, thirteen dollars and fifty-four cents. And that's the estimated cost, which I have it at, based off what it has been, is thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So...
So you're figuring on their, their, oh, she's actually on the rest of the...
Their, their monthly lock-in is... Four hundred, no, it's four hundred and fifty-three dollars cheaper.
Thirty-seven thousand.
Thirty-seven thousand, thirty-seven thousand thirteen a month, and what I've got the number run at is thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine. But if there's less poles and less tons, then that would be cheaper. The set rate is three hundred and on SanTech, so talking that RFP, they could do, but it got a little... Yes, well, Vance will have to know, yeah, Vance done, about let the tons be what the tons be and do it about pools, like what, like what was said to be. SanTech done it that way as well as is in a lock-in rate of thirty-seven thousand, thirteen dollars and fifty-four cents.
I'd like a motion to approve the six-month contract and we go with the tonnage.
Let the tons be what the tons be. We don't know who goes, or is it, it doesn't make difference. Lock-in rate is thirty-seven, thirteen fifty-four a month, estimated... Estimated is thirty-seven thousand, four sixty-nine. And that's back one back, and that's pulling one year for us, but that's all we got on SanTech.
Second.
Got a motion by James, second by Debbie, any more discussion?
One, one other thing, Commissioner, whenever you all have voted all the permits, prior to my administration, I don't think everybody's saying no, remember, like the, so, they have done a real good job of policing that at the, at the dump sites, to make sure that we're not as, as open to how the state and how county markets coming in, so.
And can you, for these things, can you assure us that nobody in Spaceman paid commercial garbage rats or bringing any garbage, Georgia or North Carolina or Monroe County?
We patrol. We patrol, no commercial coming in there. Actually, I think the city of Uptown's actually taking their start station directly, should have filled up and been in the grassy green.
So there's nobody that does garbage rat, like part of it's in Coffey Hill, and part of it's in Blue Ridge?
Not that I know of.
Or garbage rat?
No.
That's coming there? Okay. Roe County.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Doobie Escamont?
No.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
James Witty?
Yes.
Yes.
Six S?
Next is Juvenile Back Pay, it's a county executive land.
I believe you all have the, the packet in the, the insurance group packet on the request for back pay. When we were putting our budget together, Deb, Joel and I, this, for this next fiscal year, talking with Catrice discovered that Joel and Deb did not get their step increase in August of two thousand seventeen. They were higher, they were both higher within a couple weeks of each other in two thousand fourteen. They didn't get their step increase from level three to level four in twenty-seventeen, and then in August of two thousand eighteen, they did not again get their step increase from four to five. And we just determined that when this is the first year I've done the budget, because last year I was, Judge Bliles was still the judge, and I did not do the budget last year. So this is the first year I've done the budget, Catrice discovered it with me, and so I'm here asking for my staff, for you all, to approve the back pay that they have not gotten. They should have gotten, because they have been employees of this county since August of two thousand fourteen, and they have not gotten that back pay, because they didn't get their step raises or just discovered it. And in addition, we've got the juvenile contract as well, county executive thought, I was going to do it, I believe, in vice-versa, and I thought he was going to do it. So at, at any rate, I believe you all have that in, in your package as well.
That's why I just passed down to you, firm, if that's a resolution, if y'all take that one.
For the back pay?
If y'all think that the back pay, they think that's a resolution, yeah, you take one better.
Y'all have any questions?
We just talk to Bill, and then new budget man, new meeting gets paid, that's our plan.
That's, that's fine, I'm just here to present it, that's how it was on the agenda, so I'm, I'm here to present it, so.
And it's not like it's not something that they did not earn, because all they would, it was offered, it was another side.
Well, I always ask myself on this back paying stuff, I mean, regardless of liking or not liking, which I like to both these, I'm just saying, you know, if your personal feels getting way it, but you just ask yourself the same. If this would go to court, who would win, and that would win, it's cut and dried, it's their money, it's in the handbook, they're entitled to it, so it's our responsibility to pay.
If we had something we thought they wouldn't, let's do it.
They're going to win, I mean.
Well, Brooke likes to judge, I mean, you know, we, we, we all are really, now, this is like.
It would be a conflict of interest, yes, it would, I'll talk to her.
Way off, too.
Yes, and Pipinger is correct, I'm sure he would surprise.
They're in there.
Make a motion, then we, we take these here, their step pay, their.
Got a motion by James, second by Dave, any more discussion?
Make sure next time we put it in the budget. I think that's very fair, they did it.
Will do, thank you. Yes, well, thank you, I will.
Rokeau.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
DVS Watts?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
And I extend the skip number eleven, it's a jail committee, it involves locks at the jail, which is chairman of the jail committee, gives the plan.
I don't know if he's trying to hurt, I need that resolution.
Do you want to do the budget man next month?
No, I need the resolution.
For the contract.
Okay.
Back to Robby, to his sound, this is resolution five-three-nineteen. Resolution approved, interlocal agreement for juvenile detention service between Braddock County and Pope County. To authorize the county executives execute the agreement on behalf of Pope County Tennessee. Whereas Braddock County Tennessee maintains and operates juvenile detention facility in Cleveland Tennessee, known as the Braddock County Juvenile Detention Center. Whereas Pope County Tennessee desires to confine juveniles in the Braddock County Juvenile Detention Center. Whereas Braddock County Tennessee has agreed to define Pope County juvenile subject to terms and conditions set out in interlocal agreement for juvenile detention services between Braddock County and Pope County. Whereas Pope County desires to enter into said agreement, now therefore be resolved with a legislative body. And session assembled, number one, interlocal agreement for juvenile detention services between Braddock County and Pope County is approved. And number two, the county executives authorized to execute the interlocal agreement for juvenile detention services between Braddock County and Pope County on behalf of Pope County Tennessee. Be further resolved with this resolution take effect, and average fact, probably twelve fire requirement is twenty-third day of May twenty-nineteen.
Motion to approve, contract five-three-nineteen.
A motion by John, second by Dave, any more discussion? Rokeau.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
DVS Watts?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Now, back to Commissioner Williams, back to jail committee. Okay, the, this report from the jail committee, and I recommend that we enter agreement for the sheriff by locks. The jail committee having met in the correctional facility at Pope County Justice Center, talking with Sheriff Ross, and seeing firsthand the conditions of the locks. They're now on sales, we believe it poses a safe concern for the correctional officers as well as the other inmates. Bid was requested for more secure locks for the detention cells. The committee recommends the acceptance of the bid from American Detention Services of Cedar, Alabama. The cost of these locks are two-thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars each. These locks will work with the electronic system already in corrections. The total, the total of this project is eighty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars for thirty-two locks with insulation. We also recommend that they pack of that, when he orders the locks, would be forty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. And then the balance be taken later this year, which will probably be around October, and pay the balance in. And we have a budget agreement, uh, excuse me, amendment? Over there be number seventy-five, here be twenty-five. Purchase of secure locks for best security for the sheriff's department from undesignated funds, one-on-one for nine thousand, forty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. And that would be proposed in the expenditure funds of one-on-one, fifty-four, three-thirty, dash, four, ninety-nine. That comes from the committee.
I didn't make it to that committee meeting, I didn't want to. This is a, bottom line safety issue, correct, or able to?
Well, I did.
Ask the lock, current locks.
The public saves as far as, I mean, it's impossible to break out of jail, but they have pods, and they got like cells around them.
And it's so.
The, the pod doors are obscured, but it's the cells inside the pod, and it was in danger, is correct, no, they're able to. We have one tell us that, when she walked by and checked on them, by the time she walked to the next cell, if the one she just checked on meant to tell her something, they forgot. They could have that door open before she got to the next cell, holler at her, say, oh, yeah, I meant to tell you, I mean, they can open them that quick. But as far as the public in general, there's no danger getting out of jail, it's just, it's dangerous to the guards and getting out of the cell into the pod.
So bottom line safety issue.
Yeah, of course. Second motion. Got a motion by Dave, any second by James, any more discussion?
That is budget number seventy-five.
So I've done budget man.
Oh, yeah, we can do, and it's, yeah, well, if we do the budget man, we're approving the purchase, so it'd be approving budget man number seventy-five for the purchase of the locks. Any more discussion? Rokeau.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
I have.
DVS Watts?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Fabius, two thousand.
Next is insurance.
I've had, most of you on this council know me from the past few years, I've had the honor of serving this county, this county, probably fifteen years, that's I can recall, with your insurance. In terms of, I represent all the insurance companies that you could possibly want to go to. In religious terms, I'm agnostic, meaning I don't care which insurance company y'all pick, it doesn't matter to me, they all pay me about the same. So I don't have a favorite, or one that I'm trying to push this county to. Having said that, I'd be remiss if I didn't show you all where we were, and how things have gone in the last year, and give you some guidance about what I think you ought to do. Now, again, I work for you, so you all don't tell me at the end of this what you want me to do. Let me show you where we are with Cigna, first. So, right now, the county is running at a hundred and ninety percent loss ratio. That means, for every dollar we've paid Cigna in the last year, Cigna is paying out a dollar and ninety cents in claims. That's not a money-making deal for them, that's not for you. There are two large, ongoing, Greg asked me about this a minute ago, the key word here is ongoing, claim. One's a cancer, one's a rheumatoid arthritis, those two people, don't know who they are, if I did know, I can't tell you. But those two people combined this last year, and they cost, just those two, five-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars in health claims last year. The ongoing part is that Cigna says, look, going forward, these people are going to cost four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars into the next year. In other words, second half of twenty-nineteen, first half of twenty-twenty. There is another claimant that had two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars to claim that has terminated. Cigna said to me, you're a really good producer for us, you've had Pope County for a long time. I said to Cigna, I don't want to lose Pope County, they're not going to go with a large rate increase, what can you do for them? So I negotiated them down as well as I can, and they said, look, we would normally give a twenty-one and a half percent increase. But we're willing to go thirteen percent, John, if you don't shop it out to other insurance companies. So let me, let me extend this just a little bit. So here's what's going on, and here's what these large, or larger claims look like. I don't know who, you all may know who, I don't. We had an obstructive sleep apnea in an adult, had thirteen thousand dollars. An occlusion and stenosis of a bilateral carotid artery, that's an artery around this thing right here. An occlusion and stenosis is a narrowing of that, so you got to go in and surgically fix it, that's fourteen thousand. Pendaitis, thirteen thousand. A malignant neoendocrine tumor, that's inside, I can't remember. That's a cancerous tumor, a hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. Non-rematic aortic valve stenosis, that's a narrowing of a heart valve, two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. There's a type-two diabetes melitus with a foot ulcer, somebody's got really bad diabetes, it's causing problems with their feet. Sometimes they have to amputate the feet with that kind of deal. That's a nearly four-hundred thousand dollar claim on the center. And then you've got a, this is a myocardial infarction, if you look at the last two words, that's a heart attack, eighty-six thousand dollars. This word, hypogammaglobionemia, that means that your system will not allow you to fight bacterial infection. And so you're likely to get things like meningitis, pneumonia, or whatever. My daughter had, some of you will recall, she had aplastic anemia years ago, that means her bone marrow doesn't produce blood cells, your immune, your immune system is toast. And so you're, you're, just your body is subject to all kinds of infection, that's an ongoing deal. Multiple sclerosis, twenty-six thousand dollars. This is a, there was a child birth here with abnormal findings in that child, I don't know what that was, there was just something wrong. Hydroperosis with renal, or, excuse me, hy- hydro, yeah, hydroperosis, with renal and urinal calcious obstruction. That means your kidney is accumulating too much urine, and your urethra will not let that pass easily. So that's a female problem with your elimination, and then obstructive sleep apnea, pediatric, that's a child, not sleeping with. But the problem is, the drug benefit and the medical benefit totals nine-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars just on those claims. Some of those are not going away, Cigna predicts that four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars of those will go forward. That's over and above the normal claims that we would expect that Pope County government would have from its employees. That just means, frankly, that we've had a really bad year medic, can't really help that, that doesn't mean people have done anything wrong. These are just extremely large claims. So if you look at the yellow bandit, that's what we have now, and if you look all the way over to the right, you can see that the annual cost right now is about a million, three-fourty. And again, folks, I just showed you claims of nearly a million dollars, just on about nine people, I think, if my count is right. That doesn't account for anybody, that doesn't account for the other ninety employees and their dependents. So we had a really, really bad year. We'll have a little bit better year going forward, but again, we're going to push forward, large claims of four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars.
But if they know that this year is going to be less than last year.
That's right, it will be, but they're not going to get away from, Greg, all the large claims, they already know going forward they're going to have. So I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you, I think Cigna's giving you, I know it doesn't feel that way, it doesn't sound that way. I think that the renewal Cigna's giving you, and y'all, I know I don't look this old, but I've been doing this for over thirty-five years, so I know a little bit about trends. I will tell you this, the average inflationary cost of health insurance today in the southeastern United States is nine percent. In other words, you start out with a nine percent just to cover inflation. So when Cigna comes to me and says, hey, we'll give you thirteen on top of all these large claims, I know it doesn't feel that way, y'all, that's almost a gift.
But if they're not taking any of these claims into consideration, why are they not trying to give it from nine percent to thirteen percent?
Because nine percent, they're going to give you something, just because the ongoing claims are going to be four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but they say they're not taking these into consideration.
They're not taking what you have.
Right.
If they took what you had, it'd be twenty-one and a half. But what they're saying is, we're going to wipe the slate clean on those, but we know going forward, and the other side is, what I, what, what I struggle with, y'all. If I've got, even if I lie about who y'all, and I go out there and say, I'm quoting Lone County, or I'm quoting, uh, uh, Redback, the city of Redback. I've got to go to East Ridge in the morning, they already got that, so I can't just make, I got to find another municipality that, that looks pretty close to you guys in terms of number. And, and, and basically say to the insurance company, but even if I do that, I still got to say, yep, these are the claims, this is what we had last year, guys, in this city. And going forward, Cigna thinks that you're going to have about four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars of large claims going forward. I can't lie to them about that, I've got to be straight on that one. And I think the way you're going to do that, we're not going to get a good shake from anybody. I'll do it, but I don't think we're going to get this. So.
I mean, it's up, I think it's up to Catrice, so we, I mean, we're just trying to give advice, she is too, about a chance, pretty knowledgeable. I mean, personally, I don't see why you'd tell us wrong, once you have a chance.
I don't have anything against any other than I have, I ha, I take a risk of losing. I don't have anything against any other than I have, I take a risk at losing your confidence in me and losing your business, and I do not want to do that. So you all tell me, if you want me to go and try to fake it, I can fake it, but the problem is, I've got to turn in this information to a new insurance, whether it's Blue Cross, I got, look, I work for all of them. But what I really do is I work for Pope County today. I don't care about those insurance companies. Sometimes they get mad at me about that, but it is what it is.
One way in my decision, I drop.
Just as soon as we can, and this was another thing that was in the audit findings, was had not been presented to the commission, taken into consideration. So this is another one of those things, and I know you all were sitting here probably going, "Why? You know, Robbie, why didn't you beat John down?" I tried. We bet that, I thought, "John, this is, this is a law, this is..." But it is what it is.
Y'all, I, I already, Greg, just so you understand, Cigna does this kind of stuff for me because I'm what's called a platinum producer. I give them a lot of business. The reason I've done a lot with Cigna is because they're not taking into account. If this was Blue Cross, we'd be looking at a 30% rate increase if we were looking at a 10%. I promise you, I've got more business with Blue Cross, Blue Shield than I've got with any other insurance company. And if we're doing them or United Healthcare, they're going to smack y'all in this. But Cigna at least is saying, you know, "We want to keep them as a customer, so we're not going to try to just drown them in one year." But again, y'all, I don't want to get, I work for Pope County. I want to continue to work for Pope County. I want to be employed by Pope County. So you all tell me what you want me to do.
Well, I mean, I think we, we just want some information.
And if y'all want to thank, I mean, a little more, I mean, if I take John...
We got some time.
Well, I guess we can talk about it in budget meeting.
Also, you know, I have something under that as well, you know, we've had to figure out these budgets.
So we'll do that for you, thanks.
I think Robbie will tell you, Greg, you know me, you've done me for years. I stopped, if you all have a problem with a claim or a billing or services, we're on, and we'll do whatever we can to make sure your people are paying the care of you. I can control a little bit of the price, but when we get, we get claims like this, it's really hard for me to make an argument that I ought to go down and give us a flappin' noodle like we got last year. I wish I could do that every year.
How long are you required to turn up the numbers? Like, we go another year and the claims are down this year. And we talk to you the next time. And if you switch to these numbers, or can they go back to the next numbers coming up? Can they go back to these numbers?
John, they're usually going to look at the most recent 12 months. This is, we had a good year going forward. Number one, if we have a good year going forward, we could expect, I mean, like, last year, we really didn't get a rate increase. So I'm always going to fight for no increase at all. I don't want them to go up on the number, it just jeopardizes my job.
No, I just think maybe it did increase.
And, and we can certainly ask, I've got a deep, East Ridge, and I'll be there tomorrow morning, I've been to the city of East Ridge. We got a rate decrease last year because we have a good claim this year.
We'll talk about more to the budget meeting.
We all, just you all let me know what you want to do. If you want me to try to bid or blind bid, you know, I'll do whatever you want me to do, Greg. You just tell me.
Well, if I have a resolution, forgive me if you laugh, don't you? Anybody can give a price, it pays you, not us. The way you put it on. You know our situation, and we trust you, and we like your service. Why not keep me, you know, do whatever you can do for us. We're in between sanitation and everything else as you're wearing a bind.
Yeah.
That resolution's good. Pope County, everything's working.
While we're talking about staying in a bind, of course, we had no plums, call them jam. You had owner issues this year, but I will say how much we appreciate your contract staying the same compared to everything else we're looking at, sanitation and insurance, we do appreciate that, that did have us that much.
Very welcome.
Even though we did call yet, not you, but the company, and grab, we'll brag on it at the same time.
Please remember, Stoneworks 24/7, call me.
All right, well, we appreciate the contract staying the same anyway. Next on agenda is the vacation pay for Mr. Gass.
Could I have a copy of that from the road department? Copy of that that Mr. Davis gave you? It might help, help me. He's got an extra copy or something.
I got it, sir.
I guess this, this different procedure for Mr. Patrick here, but I don't know, I don't think I would do it for him. I left before I got this year's vacation. This is plain in the county policy here. Look on page 1, 2, and 4.
In what?
My vacation pay.
What page was it, Steve?
Look on, look in the personnel policy, look on page 1. That will define employee, which is anybody that's full-time. Look on page 2, under who's exempt, and that's, the people that are exempt are anybody that does a half $40 a week. Everybody else under exempt employee, the life fire deaths, administrative positions are typically exempt. On down these employees, however, accumulate sick pay and vacation leave. That defines, and then, page 2, over on forward. It's on some pages here, it's in the personnel policy, I'll give you a copy of it. I also called a friend of mine who's administrator up in another county. He's an attorney, and he said it probably come to waste in her law too. The vacation pay is same as, my last two weeks it was helping.
I make a motion to approve it.
You have a motion by Samantha, second, but David, any discussion? Go, Tom.
Greg Brooks? Debbie Davis?
Yes.
D.B. Eskenau?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancin?
Yes.
James Woody?
No.
Greg, since that passed, I do have the amendment that laws was brought forward, so we'll get...
We'll go ahead and do it tonight, boy.
It wasn't our case, but the budget...
Amendment number 76. Budget amendment number 76, purpose of amendment, show appropriation for commission approved vacation pay after previous administrator of the election, proposed source funds. Against Monday's made fund balance in amount $1,787.38. Proposed expenditure funds is $1,787.38. We have a comment here. The calculation of pay was based on the following formula. Yearly salary is $64,682 divided by yearly worked hours of $2,080 equals an hourly pay of $31.10 an hour. 14 days of quest pay at eight hours per day, total of 112 hours, 112 hourly pay, $31.10 equals $3,483.20. Salary line will have $1,695.82 in it from reduction of new administrators paid leave, $1,787.38 needed to fulfill approved pay. Got a motion on this budget amendment, number 76. Got a motion by Samantha, second, by David. Any discussion on budget amendment? Go, Tom.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
D.B. Eskenau?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancin?
Yes.
James Woody?
And, but we've got one thing here in that from state, it's a, this is a, well, Robbie, we got the Comptroller, we got that straightened up from the school from state, we're borrowing money again. I think we just got to make it known at a budget meeting that we have been released by Comptroller to borrow money again.
And what that is?
Here's the copy.
If you read all the way through that, along this order of ideas, is on the school side, the school did not have enough in their purpose for the school better project fund. So I didn't know that that's what we worked to get cleaned up. Remember we did said earlier, that was, that was part of holding up a lot of things in the county. It happened again, but we were aware of it, and she advised that the school was far as to help us work on this.
But one thing, Pope's been told that you're spending that here.
Greg, the money come in later.
Good.
And one other thing, Mr. Brooks, on the, the statements, the T.N.R.A., if you all remember, that's probably the third, fourth meeting as the road department brought this to our attention. The T.N.R.A. retirement 401(k) at 457, they will be here on June 5th. So many of the county employees, we've got those meetings set up. This is what they can put in for their own retirement. They'll be coming up on June 5th. And we're probably sure to get all the department heads, so we can track this thing down. And they're going to come two different days, in the month of state, to try to accommodate these and the west side, and go out with our sheriff department.
Any more math, any more space?
Remember, remember down home day, the last Saturday of each month, 6:00, 8:00 o'clock, here's the board house, Gotham Woodgrass singing, this month, Kathy's County Kitchen will be providing food. Chicken and dumplings, and vegetable big food, and the 10 plus 2, we'll chat to be here soon. So remember this. Commissioner Evans this month, donated the money to bounce out last month. Commissioner Kimbinger did. So I appreciate y'all doing this, and come out the apartment, 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, the last Saturday of each month, get around the board house.
Your hope, Jared. Well, one more thing, Mr. Brooks, I apologize to everybody. Some of y'all said you were a part of here tonight, I don't know, but we'll text you maybe. I'm going to say what's going on with the council, some of the issues with that. That's the reason I was trying, I just wanted to make it clear.
Well, it's not uncommon, ladies and gentlemen, this time of year, we're going to do our budget. You know, if our people get their phones out, do calculations, I have quite a bit driven, wanting to judge any heads. You got something, Mr. Gass?
Did they go on there?
You think it's a big package, two hydroic compounds, for sure what you're having to do.
Does that vote came in on an RFP?
I think so.
I told you about that order, it's going to just...
What was it, that one? It was on two hydroic compounds, three alcohol, three compounds.
He came in like he said. That's what they, that's what the other thing, I didn't know if it's something because most counties already these are done differently, but I don't know if that's a fire department or what.
At this point, you're needing her approval. You're needing her approval for this. I should go $5,000. Right there, my county money, that's my, I'm not having a clue.
So y'all were paying for it, we just got a phrase made. Is that filmed at the end, when it's been ruled?
It is, but you can open bids, it's an open meeting. It's just, you can't actually take action without spending. And I've asked the county executive, I asked you to make sure they receive that copy of their bid proposal process, and that's what you need to go by next time, so we're happy with your names. We have sent you a copy of the 495, thanks again.
There just one, is that right? Do we just have one?
Yes.
The long bid was from Wind Fire Equipment LLC, from Porter, Kentucky. It's quoted as West Polk Fire Department, being Tennessee. Quantity is two of them. Description is a M28 bolt brute force combi with fuel battery. Unit price of $8,995 each, for a total of $17,990. Y'all got that much left?
They're signing up for this report.
Sound like a group?
$8,995 each total is, so we got taxed too, or freighted. $18,240 including freight. So we're going to act on this night, so we don't spend rules. Are you needing that pretty quick? Are you needing this here pretty quick?
The district closed out the budget, so...
Well, they've already closed out the PO, so if you done drawn a PO on this?
We're waiting on bids, you know, and you're not calling PO out, such, such a matter. You've not drawn the money out of the line? No. You should have been close one. I'm glad you're going to pay that like PO.
I think y'all had PO that went out, the thing weren't right, and you come back and ask for another PO. I think that's how this is, because it should be through to this amount of government. Higher than, they would say that higher than about $40,000. But that's my, that's my understanding, is that they turned in a PO to shore it down. But I don't know that for a fact without, you know what POs were, I know that it was a mix-up and it was turned around with PO in the office.
There was a big, that's how hard it is, we had three POs.
I made a motion, we have to spend rules to take like this one piece of this bid here, or this bid here.
Got a motion to spend the rules, second, motion to spend the rule, James, second, for you.
I've been...
Is this how sensitive, or can it wait for the next month's meeting?
Or is this something you're doing right now?
It's got to be, you get it pretty quick. Well, they didn't answer it. They didn't answer, did they? You hope that I called them. Go, Tom.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
D.B. Eskenau?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancin passed. James Woody? CHS passed.
Am I on my list, second, please, add the lead. For the article here, please check. For the article here.
I don't know, the other, she's already wrote the deal. I can probably figure out what it is.
Who's the bid from, Bruce? New York, who's the bid from? Uh, couple, couple. That was, uh, Mr. Porter, Kentucky. It was, uh, Wind, Kentucky, Fire Equipment LLC, Porter, Kentucky. Are those jaws are black? Are those jaws are black?
It's, it's called a combi tool, press and cut, they're rated for the new levels of putting in vehicles, taking out higher, uh, fighting force.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, is that one free janitor can?
Anyone, two rescue trucks down here. I made a motion to accept the bid from Wine Fire Equipment for eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty dollars.
Now, what, each post pays, and one leaves too, in a near here.
I had dealt it up. Now, this is all coming out of y'all's account, any of the front line.
No separate money. This is, y'all, basically, y'all's accounts, right?
Got a motion by John, say it by, D, uh, go call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
D B S. Knotts?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton, pass. James Witty?
All they got to do is fire that one. And do remain, probably down here, probably having their fire crew do, that's probably where it's from, wait, so, we're trying to stay away from that.
I don't say nothing about.
Uh, what kind of work, you're, you're getting on the actual.
Greg, this, I agree, this money come out of their line.
Right.
If it's their line, they chose.
Right, it's their money.
Right, so, I mean, if they won't spend it out their line, yeah, absolutely. I thought it was misunderstanding that we were gonna buy that county general.
Oh, it's ours, well, you ask.
You know what I'm talking about down there, you said all that dude's asked for, well, all they got to do is spend it out of their line.
Yeah, if they got the money, they want one.
Right.
All they got to do is turn it into a question for, for proof of money. I hear a motion, the general?
So do.